Okay, we're gonna call to order the city council meeting of January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Place your right hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm good, Darren. How about yourself? Okay, everybody. Today, the internet is out, and so we will broadcast the council meeting on Spectrum Cable Channel thirty-five with audio unlimited video. Please check with your cable provider for details. And so we won't be live online at Facebook today. So now, Madam Clerk, did I, did I call the roll? Please call the roll.
But a quorum is present for the City Council, Successor Agency Housing Authority, Parking Authority, and Joint Powers Authority.
Okay. Public comment. Any person wishing to address the City Council's Successor Agency Housing Authority Parking Authority or the JPA on an item on the agenda, agenda other than the public hearing may do so at this time. Three minutes. Okay, with that, we'll close public comment. Item one, CSA one and H one.
Quorum registered.
Move allow payment.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, successor agency members and housing authority members, Gray.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Chairman Butts.
Aye. Madam Clerk, what's the next scheduled matter?
Yes, Mayor, the next scheduled matter is a public hearing to consider an appeal by J.D. Thompson, applicant of the Planning Commission's denial of special use permit number two-three dash zero-zero-zero-one-seven to allow a mortuary in an approximately four-thousand-two-hundred-square-foot, one-story commercial building on an approximately five-thousand-two-hundred-square-foot M-one zoned property at three-two-three East Beach Avenue.
Has the notice of the hearing been given in the time, form, and manner as required by law? And do you have the affidavit on file?
Yes, Mayor, notice has been given and affidavit is on file.
Have any communications been received on the matter?
Yes, Mayor, communications have been received and passed out to Mayor and Council and to all staff.
Okay, is there a staff report, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, there is, Mayor, and members of the council. Mr. Chris Jackson, our Development Services Department Director, will give you a brief presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Jackson, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the City Council. This request is coming as a result of a special use permit requirement that is contained in our municipal code, which basically requires that any mortuaries that are adjacent to any residentially developed or zoned properties have to go through the special permit process. The building itself is developed with a forty-two-hundred-square-foot, one-story commercial building, which was constructed in nineteen fifty-three. And then most recently, prior to this proposal, it was used as a graphic art design studio. This location is situated, this property is situated on the north side of Beach Avenue. It's part of the downtown TOD designated area. It's zoned, the subject site was zoned for heavy business industrial, which was C-three zone in our city in nineteen twenty-six, but it was re-designated in nineteen forty-six as a light manufacturing zone. Properties to the north are zone C-three and also developed with industrial and residential uses, which brings this before us. The proposal is to contain five-hundred-and-forty-one square feet intake area. This is, I would stipulate that this is a mortuary use. There will be no hosted events here, viewings or memorial services or funeral services. It's just for preparation and storage of remains. So the proposal is to contain five-hundred-and-forty-one square feet of intake area, six-hundred-square-foot embalming station area, six-hundred-and-five square foot cold storage area, five-hundred-and-fifty-seven square feet casket placement area, and a two-hundred-and-eighty-square-foot break room. Mortuary will operate, proposal operate twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, as you could imagine. These services require that. And we'll have a licensed funeral director to oversee the general operation of the mortuary. The, the use is regulated by the Code of Regulations, so there are stipulations on how mortuaries have to operate to comply with state law. And that, the, the item was considered by the Planning Commission on November first nineteen twenty, twenty twenty-three. The commission at that time, it's contained in the staff report, determined that the mortuary would potentially expose the residential community to hazardous materials and then have a negative effect on the surrounding residential property values. I would note in closing that the reason why the special use permit is required is because of its adjacency to residential uses. So these are all kind of the parameters in which the Planning Commission considers in terms of making a determination whether or not it's appropriate for these type, this type of use to be located at the subject site. With that, that concludes staff's presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
On this matter. Okay, okay, so look, here's how we're gonna do it. Like, you're gonna have to line up this way along the back wall and this way coming towards the dais, and then the first one is gonna be closest to that speaking vegetable back there, okay? So let, so let's stand up. Everybody's gonna speak. There you go, stand up. I know that. Okay, and then, and then let's, let's move that way. No, 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 don't go this way, go that way, this way. There we go. Let's, let's go like a clock. And then the first one up is that, there we go. Oh, my goodness. I was absolutely. Okay. Okay. Okay, here we go. Okay, we're up.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor. My name is J.D. Thompson. Is this, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Let's make sure that the mic is close enough to your mouth.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I definitely can.
Good afternoon, council members and Mr. Mayor. My name is J.D. Thompson, and I am the owner of Los Angeles Funeral Service, as well as the applicant to have this mortuary placed in Inglewood. I wanted to address the council today. The Planning Commission denied my special use application based on concerns that were presented by community members back on November one. I was not made aware of their concerns. Prior to that meeting, I was handed a letter of opposition as I stood at the very podium, and so I thought it only fair that I come and speak. The community has presented four concerns that I would like to address, and they were toxicity, air quality, traffic flow, and property devaluation. Regarding toxicity, toxic reactions to mortuary-use fluids are minimum. As such a reaction would require ingestion, to put the community in danger, embalming fluids would have to be gaseous in nature, allowing toxic fumes to escape the building. The toxic effect of ingesting embalming fluid is no different than the toxic effect of ingesting bleach. Bleach is generally found in the homes of everyone here, including the community members abroad. Any person considered to be sane or competent would not drink bleach, and they would not drink embalming fluid. Of pertinent note, there are fluids considered to be hazardous already within this community. These chemicals have been in this community for a considerable amount of time. The food processing plant located at two-hundred East Beach Avenue shows a hazardous placard next to its address. The panels on that placard are three-one-zero, and I will show pictures later. Mortuaries are not required to display such a placard. The sewer treatment facility located at three-six-two East Beach Avenue also displays a hazardous placard because it stores and administers ferric chloride. I also have pictures of the tanker truck that delivers the ferric chloride to these tanks. Like embalming fluid, ferric chloride is toxic if ingested. The tanker truck that delivers the chemical must display the Department of Transportation hazard placard showing the numbers.
Ten seconds, sir.
One-seven-six-zero. This classifies the materials as hazardous. I just wanted to mention that the mortuary here does not present any danger anymore than what is already in, and I would say even less than what in the community.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna tell everybody following, you know, we give three minutes. It's only necessary that you speak until you finish your thought. I just want to feel it's not mandatory to use three minutes. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor and everybody, my name is Rob Carlin. I am a funeral director and started Los Angeles Funeral Service about twenty years ago. In transition to Mr. Thompson, I've entrusted our good reputation with J.D., and if you review his reviews, he's got nothing but five-star reviews. He's a very capable, honest, hard-working guy. In terms of Los Angeles Funeral Service for the last twenty years, we've had to rely on other institutions who provided us with storage and embalming. In that respect, this opportunity will allow us to rely only on ourselves. During the pandemic, we were severely limited in terms of the number of families we could help and had to turn down, for the first time in my life, families. We couldn't help them because we didn't have the storage facility. Here, it will be a benefit to the citizens of Inglewood to have this facility. And it, I have a unique perspective. I was in the mortgage lending business for twenty-five years, made many, many loans on residences, and never did I see a negative adjustment in any appraiser saying that the value has been diminished because of proximity to a funeral home. And this isn't really a funeral home. There's no services here. There's no parking issues. There's, this is not open to the public. So the dangers of the embalming fluid will really not relate to anybody other than embalmers that have physical contact with embalming, and they have to take proper safety precautions. The Department of Consumer Affairs Cemetery and Funeral Bureau will inspect this property annually, semiannually, and will approve it based on whether or not it's complying with all the regulations regarding safety. So I think this is a very positive thing, and I really don't believe there will be a seventeen percent reduction in value. I challenge anybody to come up with an appraisal.
Everybody, please remember to speak into the mic. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. And Mayor Butts, you purchased a couple of caskets from us a long time ago.
I did. My parents, yes.
From a casket company, which is a related company. I appreciate your.
And we appreciated your work.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hello, respected. My name is Ching Wong. I'm the homeowner, three-three-four East Beach Avenue. I live in there from two-zero-zero-eight. I park my pickup on the street. My, the middle of the pickup is smashed three times because the streets are very narrow and very busy. Number two, I hope the council can see the chemical. And we already have a pleading, pleading company in our left. Then we have a grinding company there, and they said too much. And please consider family value, and please consider we have children. And also consider we have a sausage farm company, food company not far away in the same street. And many worker parking their car, walk to the, to work. They're all contaminated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Yes, I'm Bishop W.A. Garrett. I do funerals. I've done many of them. And even though there are toxic chemicals that are coming and that come from other aspects, I don't want additional toxic chemical coming to our neighborhood. I live on, I live in Inglewood. I live on Lockalina, which is just above Beach, and I don't want the potential for my property values to go down. And so I am against it, even though I do funerals. So that's my.
Could I ask you a quick question, sir?
Yes, you may.
Why, why are you sure that your property be devalued?
Because they, because it's been assessed, it's been said and taught, said that property values may go down, and I don't want that to happen in my neighborhood.
Okay.
We have, we had a difficult time years ago when my property values dropped dramatically, and then now because of.
That was, that was actually before I was mayor, but don't worry.
Yes, I know. It was under Mayor Durin. Yeah, because I knew him personally, too. So I just was, just don't want that potential to happen in our neighborhood at all. And the property values are going up just because of the stadiums built and the other stuff that's there. And so I'd like for them to maintain that. And in addition, I don't want the potential for any other toxic chemicals to be in our neighborhood.
All right, thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Chris Clausen. I am the founder and CEO of Clojure. We are based in Austin, Texas. We are an online end-of-life concierge service and marketplace. So basically, what we do when somebody dies, instead of calling a funeral home directly, they'll call us and we'll help match them with the right vendor for their particular needs, budgets, et cetera. So in that capacity, I work with funeral homes all across the country in a variety of different budgets. But I will say that our very first customer was actually the actor Tom Sizemore. And that was a lot of pressure on me as a founder because I really had to get that case right. And we had a lot of different options that we could have gone with at the time, but we ended up working with J.D. And I have to tell you that J.D. did a credible job for us. We needed somebody who was gonna be able to come in on budget, most importantly, because unfortunately, Mr. Sizemore's next of kin was his mother, who's a retired city, city servant for the city of Detroit. Okay? So we needed somebody who was gonna act professionally, do it on budget, take extreme care of a very tough customer. And as the former city ombudsman for the city of Detroit, I can assure you, Mrs. Sizemore was a very tough customer. But to this day, Ms. Sizemore is still in contact with J.D. All right? He did such a great job for us. Now, I'm a former resident of the single, city of Inglewood. I lived on Hillsdale Street for about five years, just down the street from Inglewood Mortuary. You know, I ended up buying a house in Long Beach and moving to Long Beach. I can assure you that the reason for that was not because I lived down the street from Inglewood Mortuary. It was because of all the fools who light off fireworks at eleven o'clock at night, two o'clock in the morning on a random Tuesday, Thursday, that the city can't seem to do anything about.
Actually, they're all gone now.
I, I would argue that that's doing more to devalue your property values than an upstanding businessman like J.D., who's gonna do the best job possible. And frankly, folks, we're all gonna die, right? I can assure you that a lot of you have had your family members serviced by J.D. when he's worked at other funeral homes. You probably don't even realize it. Okay? And with the consolidation that's going on in the industry, the private equity firms, they're buying up smaller mom-and-pop funeral homes so that they can control pricing. You're gonna need a J.D. in your community to keep prices low. Okay? That's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Quick questions, if you know. How is formaldehyde vented, though? I, I would imagine it has to be vented. How, how is it vented?
I'd like to yield the remainder of my time to J.D. to answer that question for you, Mayor.
No, you really can't do this in Congress. So, so when we, when we get an embalmer up there, we'll ask him. Next speaker.
I'm a, I'm a tech guy. My usual outfit is jeans and flip-flops, but out of respect for the council today, I put on a suit.
And we appreciate it. Next speaker.
I'm Craig Sprecher, proud Inglewood resident for over thirty years, right on Lockalina, adjacent to Beach, right behind the sewer, sewer facility. And, and you know, that was there when I moved in, so I can't say anything about the smells that come from that. Same with Don Lee or, or other places that's been there. This one, we have control of. The city wants to develop the, over an acre property right in front of this proposed site for the mortuary, which doesn't make any sense to have that right at the front gate of this, whatever they build for a complex on over acre land. And when it, the last meeting we had with the Planning Commission, it was unanimous that they denied it. And it came up from the owner that there were gonna be contract employees or some kind of ten-nine-nine employees that were gonna be doing the work twenty-four-seven. So I really don't know how that could be, you know, supervised by a licensed director, you know, twenty-four-seven. So I'm not sure how that works. But, but, you know, freelancers, they can perhaps take shortcuts, or they're getting paid by the job, not by the hour. So I don't know how that works out. But the fact that chemicals, chemicals are, can escape is a concern for all the residents that are directly around the area. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for listening to me. I, I work at three-two-nine East Beach, next, next door to that, that building you're talking about. Those buildings are very old right there, built in the fifties. Earlier, there was a carpenter or a cabinet shop right in that same building, and they would spray, they would spray, not paint, but lacquer thinner or whatever, some chemicals they would spray on this cabinets they built. And my building is right next door, and the fumes would come through the walls of these old buildings into my old building, and we had to leave my building and go someplace else. And we ended up having an arrangement with the cabinet maker. He only would paint on Sundays because otherwise we couldn't work there. So I know, I know fumes come through that old building. It comes into my old building. Also, I heard that there were supposed to be four parking spaces inside that building. There's really only enough room for three, three vehicles in the building. The, the traffic on the street is very fast. There's no parking and stuff. And I'm also very concerned about the property values, too. I've been there over fifty years, and we're all worried about the property values. It's so important. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Keith Walsh, Inglewood resident. We have, we have to look at this neighborhood really as a neighborhood, okay? It's just not an industrial area like it might have once been. And so it has mixed use, mixed zoning, a lot of residences on either side of Beach, and then you have residences, a lot of residences up on Warren. Okay? Now, the said space three-two-three used to be an artist's studio. That's the kind of business or enterprise that has, it's a low emissions business by any. Low traffic, low noise, low disturbance in terms of the neighborhood. Okay? Each, each beach is a very narrow street, okay? That particular building is right on the bend, okay? And it's within zero to a hundred-and-fifty feet from other residences or artist live-work space. So petitioners at three-two-one are at zero feet away from this proposed business, okay? Whatever emissions are, you know, happen from this business, whatever they are. Primatory, I don't know if that's part of the equation or not. But we need to have that. I mean, I don't, I didn't hear it, right? Okay? So, anyway, those emissions are gonna go up the hill into people's backyards, twenty feet higher than the roof lines on that black building on East Beach, or they're gonna go across the street to the residences there. Now, I'm very familiar with East, East Beach. It's a hollow, used to be the Sentinel Creek, okay? Things linger there. Air lingers there. I walked past through that street at nine AM this morning. What did I smell? Firewood smoke from somebody's chimney hanging on that street. Where is that air gonna go? Who knows? Okay? Also, we have difficulty parking. There's no, you know, there's no consistent side of the street with sidewalks, right? Parking is an issue, okay? Big trucks coming through, it's an issue, okay? Twenty-four-hour facility, that's an issue in combination with everything else that's there. The other businesses that are there are low emissions kind of businesses, right? Metal grinding company, they gotta contain that stuff, okay? Now, you have a lot of artists living in that space. Artists are low emission, low hassle people, particularly when they're paying the kind of rents we are now in Inglewood, okay? It's a very dense place. Now, if you compare that other mortuaries in the city of Inglewood, they got space. They have parking lots.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, sir, you were at time. I was just so fascinated.
Thank you very much.
I forgot to look at the clock.
Greetings, council and mayor. My name is Gina Lamb, and I own the building at three-two-one East Beach, next door to the proposed site. This special use permit is sort of written weirdly in that it mischaracterizes Beach Avenue as mainly industrial, when in fact it is an artist-live-work overlay zone as designated by the city's own TOD plan, which is why I created the map that's in your packet on, on the table that shows that there's over twelve existing homes with children within a hundred-and-fifty feet of the proposed mortuary site, along with over seven artist studios. Within fifty feet, there's this large residentially zoned, over an acre, almost two-acre lot, that has a plan for a future of eighty residences, also, that would also promote the TOD plan. A mortuary right across the street from eighty residences would not be a good thing. It would actually be a detriment to that plan. Beach Avenue sits between Ed Vincent Park and the downtown metro stop. We do not want an embalming lab in the middle of this intimate and vibrant neighborhood community. My property is next door to the mortuary site. There are zero setbacks. My building is just three inches away from the wall of the property, and our roofs connect, along with Clark, who spoke before. All our roofs connect at the top. When the cabinet shop was in there quite a few years back now, whenever they would paint or lacquer, the fumes would fill our building. Termite guys will not separately fumigate our buildings because they're worried about the crossover of fumes and gas. Embalming formaldehyde is a toxic cancer-causing chemical, and I have backup studies from EPA Cancer Institute. You can read them all. I am a cancer survivor. I do not want to be subjected to any further risk or worry about risk. The windows of my office where I work daily look out over the driveway of this proposed site. Now, my view will be filled with caskets and body bags going in and out twenty-four-seven. As a matter of fact, it has a very beautiful hearse that has a skylight on the top, so I can see right down to the caskets. For the past thirty years, I've invested much of my time and love into the city of Inglewood as a TOD stakeholder committee member, Inglewood Cultural Arts founding director, annual city festival founder, live-work ordinance I worked on the planning with, one percent for the arts and more. If this passes, I will be forced to move out with a massive devaluation of my property, see the study that Trulia did that was, and it gives their methodology. This is a detriment to the arts and the TOD.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have to call time.
And the TOD plan.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Amber Turgerson. I also live on Beach Avenue. Beach is a very, very busy street. We've already got enough going on, and I just have two words: you are not welcome in our neighborhood.
I thought you liked me. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Butts and City Councilman. I'm opposed. My name is Ken Herbert. I've been an active artist and businessman here in the city of Inglewood for fifteen years. I have a property on La Brea. And I am very much opposed to the mortuary being located at three two three East Beach Avenue inside the residential artist-live-work overlay zone. That actually is very little light remaining, light manufacturing happening today. Inglewood, in the time that I've been here, Inglewood's gone through a lot of changes and everything has been fantastic. Inglewood is so much on the rise with the new stadium, with the, that being the SoFi Stadium, with the Clippers Stadium, with restaurants, other development here. I think this idea is just really, really bad. And I think that we can definitely propose the site has no setbacks and it's a no-go. I, I thank you for your time and here you go.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker.
My name is Anita Gladden. I live on Beach Avenue. I've been living over here for twenty-three years. All these business people wants to come in now and take over our city or, or street. They do not live over here. I'm a cancer survivor. Two years in remission. I do not need to inhale any more fumes than I have already inhaled because my cancer, they don't know where it came from. It's a rare cancer. I do not want them in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
You know, we can't applaud you guys. Okay, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Bernadette Cooper. And I respectfully oppose this because, but, because we do need mortuaries and that's why I'm happy that Inglewood Cemetery Mortuary is about a half a mile away. You know, I am loving Inglewood. I went to high school here. I created the concept of a band called Climax, which became a platinum-selling band in Inglewood, California. I moved abroad and came back to take care of my mom because she got sick and was invited to look at a piece of property owned by my, my, owned by Joyce. And I took it because Inglewood, it was a wonderful creative energy and it's an artist. Beach Avenue is an artist's spot. We're behind the doors of a lot of these businesses or, or major people who are sculpting and painting and putting these, this work in, in museums. And I have my, I live three blocks away from this mortuary that's supposed to be mortuary. Three doors, I'm sorry. Three doors away from this mortuary. And I have my recording studio. In my recording studio, John Legend, his last album, Grammy Award album was mixed there, Bigger Love. And also the inaugural celebration for Obama, that music was also mixed there.
You're saying on Beach Street?
On Beach, mhm.
And, and, and did you say that you were like part of the start of the band Climax?
Yes.
The Men in All Paws Climax? Oh, my goodness.
Yes.
All right.
And I moved, I love Inglewood. This particular block, I always looked at as a kid in high school and I said, I always loved this block. And so when I was invited to move into the area because it was an artist district, I was happy about that. I won't take up much time, but I would also say that I'm not assured that what this gentleman is saying is completely accurate because my last meeting that we came to, they asked him if he had started business and he said no. But my neighbor witnessed him and a gentleman bring a casket out of, out of, out of a hearse in the middle of the night. So I'm not quite sure how much we can believe in what he says. However, I respectfully thank you because we do need mortuaries and that's why I'm happy that Inglewood Cemetery is a half a mile away. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Joyce.
Thank you for listening. My name is Joyce Delal and I am, I own with my family the property at three one three East Beach. We purchased the property in twenty fourteen because it is in the live-work overlay zone that specifies in certain areas of Inglewood that artists can live and work in the same property. And I am an artist. The first tenant that we had was Bernadette and she's been there ever since. And yes, she makes her music and mixes her music and the residents and lives there with her elderly mother. This, I, I agree that it sounds like it's a good business, but it is not the correct or proper place for it because it is a residential neighborhood. And I also am on the board of the Inglewood Open Studios that sponsors the annual art walk. We have lots of visitors coming on the street once a year to visit the artist studios. And I think that it's just not the right place for this business. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
You okay?
Hi, everybody. My name is Benson Fan. I live on one one nine East Beach. I came here to speak in opposition of this appeal. So a few points have been brought up and I would like to offer some rebuttal to those points that's been brought up. The first point being that the toxicity level in a mortuary is quote unquote minimum and that if the area already exhibits a decent degree of toxicity, this shouldn't matter. I don't really understand this logic because that's sort of like saying if you're already sick, you might as well continue to smoke cigarettes. Right? Because if the, if the toxicity is already there, our concern should be decreasing the toxicity and not increasing it however minimally. So this idea that because there's, because there's already toxicity in the air, that we shouldn't care about increasing it even minimally seems to me a completely illogical statement. Now, the second point. Now, I've never used this service. I have no doubt that this could be a very, indeed, good business. But to me, this is irrelevant. We're not talking about how good he is or isn't as a businessman. We're not talking about how good or not this service is. We're simply talking about does the neighborhood want a mortuary in it? If it's a good business or a bad business, it's irrelevant. We're not talking about using it, we're talking about the damage it could do to the neighborhood. Right? A good mortuary is still a mortuary. It doesn't change the fact that it could still decrease your property value. It still has toxicity, however well it may be run. Now, to that gentleman over there, I don't doubt that you had a good experience with this business. But you live in Long Beach now and I feel to see why a resident of Long Beach has any bearing on whether or not we, the resident of Inglewood, wants a mortuary in our neighborhood. So, now to the fourth point. That area, as we all know, it's already congested. The street is narrow because it was zoned improperly. If you've been there, you know. Now, why do we want increasing traffic with heuses way longer than the average vehicle in that area? It's beyond me. But regardless, we know that it's going to come and we know that it's going to be worse. We know that especially as residents of that neighborhood, that it's not going to do anything to alleviate the already congested traffic. The next point. We seem to have this idea that because it's a good business, that we should help them now because they've struggled during the pandemic. A lot of businesses struggled during the pandemic, right? The neighborhood is not here to help all of them out. Gina runs a business. Should we help her out? She doesn't want this. Why should the quality of one business or the struggle of one business outweigh the struggle of another one? It's pointless. The question is just whether or not you want this in your neighborhood. Not how good of a business it is, not how minimum the toxicity is. And the answer is no, I do not want this mortuary in the neighborhood. So, now to the last point, which is that there's this business running it. I'm not anti-business. This is not about whether or not we should be against business. This is simply about what do we want in our neighborhood? And I for one do not want this mortuary in this neighborhood at all. And as the city council, you, you should be here representing the will of the residents and not whether or not we should help out individual local businesses, however good their service may be.
Okay, we appreciate the direction. And next speaker. Now, sir, you live on Beach? All right.
Hello, my name's Steven and I actually live about sixty feet from the proposed mortuary. I'm really against it. For one thing, it, it is going to cause a lot of traffic. You know, before, only one side of the street was where you were to park on, now it's both sides. So both sides, you could park on the street. And then we have the big rigs come in because of the, the factory down the street. Also, people, you know, kids walk, you know, through there to get to the park. And, you know, you're, you're supposedly going to expose them maybe to some type of chemicals there. Also, you know, we, we are like an art district there. And every, like twice a year, they have a little event and people drive there to, you know, purchase art and look at art. And, you know, you go on your Google map and you're going to see, okay, look, there's this art studio here, but right next to it is a mortuary. And that's not going to look great. You know, it's, in regards to like, you know, I think the gentleman said that he used to be a mortgage broker and, you know, years ago, but, you know, things have changed where now there's apps and there's so much more, like so much more stuff that we could get information that now, you know, every little thing counts, you know. And if, if, if it does devalue my property seventy percent, that's a quarter million dollars right there that my property is going to lose just because of a mortuary. That's literally, literally like about sixty feet away. Also, you know, there are kids that live around the area. You know, my girlfriend's son, he has heart, heart condition and I don't want him to get exposed to that. And so for me, it's, I'm very against it and hope you see it the same way. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. And did you say you lived on Beach as well?
Yes, two, two, two houses down.
Two houses down, okay.
Hi, my name is Sean O'Shea and I live on La Colina. And I want to say that I do appreciate the services that they do provide, but I think this is the wrong location for this. I think, you know, in a completely industrial area or there's so many places in Inglewood that they could find. I don't, this location, it's an old building. I just, there's no sidewalks. I like to walk up and down the street. You know, there's a local market. It's just a, a nice area and it's just the wrong place for this. So I am against it. Thank you.
Thank you. And you live on La Colina? Nobody from La Colina ever comes to our council meetings. That's big. No, I said, I said today, but never before, all right.
Good afternoon. My name is Nancy Lamus. I specialize in the art and the science of the beloved deceased. I'm here to support J D and his vision of helping out the neighborhood and community. We live in a death-denying society as Americans. Just with birth follows death, that goes hand in hand. I think having another facility close by to Inglewood Cemetery, mortuary and others, those facilities can only handle so much and care for so much. So by adding someone else in the community to help out, that type of overflow is much needed. Now, as far as the concern with, with chemicals and such, I understand the buildings. I'm sure this would probably be a great time for you to come together as a collective and figure out some proper way, better ventilation since the building is so old. And I think we can start from there and just support each other as a community in whole. Thank you.
Thank you. And ma'am, I didn't catch, are you an Inglewood resident as well? Okay, hey, you guys. We're polite here, right? All right, all right, thank you very much. Next speaker.
Hi, I am. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
All right, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and everybody. I am Christopher Grundy. And in regards to the building, I keep hearing about the air quality and all that, all those things. The building is, as you can see, it is enclosed, it's closed off. And as far as traffic goes, there's actually no traffic when you're going in and out of that building as it pertains to the work that we do. When it comes to getting air and all those things that you guys are worried about, the air, the liquids and the fluid that you're worried about consuming is all inside that building. And so nothing is getting out to affect you as you go throughout that.
I have to, I'll give you the time, that's why I have to ask you the question, though. It's not a zero-sum game that the vent, the gases have to go somewhere. So where are they collected? How are they dispersed?
Mayor, so the toxic, embalming fluids is not gaseous. That's what I mentioned. It's all fluid. It goes into the decedents. Everyone here in your lifetime has walked past a mortuary. When you go past Angeles or Inglewood Mortuary, which I should mention, all of these facilities are right next to food places. Angeles is next to Albertson Market. Inglewood Mortuary is next to Jack in the Box. Spalding Mortuary is next to Jack in the Box. I have pictures of all this. And the reason I came back up is this is the second time I've been called a liar. Of course, I'm operating out of the building in the sense that I have vehicles there. There are no bodies in this building because the state has not signed off on it. I would lose my license. I have served this family, including some of these council members, with honor and dignity and I will not be called a liar. I'm not operating.
Okay, sir, sir, you, you got a, a second time because it's your project and so we wanted to let you answer the questions. Excuse me? Excuse me, sir. Sir, 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 sir? Sir, I don't know what you're talking about. Well, that's not how we operate things, okay? All right, thank, no, no, and I thank you very much.
Hello, hi, Mr. Mayor, hi, council members. I live on La Colina. I am here as well. And my bedroom window looks at this building. If I pop up in my bed and I look out my front, my back window, my bedroom window, I can see this proposed mortuary. It's not the first thing that I want to see in the mornings. And I doubt that anybody else would, would want to see that as well. This is a residential neighborhood. I live on a street with a lot of really cute old houses. There is an empty lot that I believe we are, you know, in talks right now with, you know, having eighty or so residences put there. I don't believe that those people also want to live across the street from a mortuary and see that every single morning. The street is really narrow. I walk there with my dogs. I almost get hit by cars constantly. There are people that do donuts on that street. I mean, there's a lot of commotion happening on that street. And I just don't feel that having a mortuary with hearse and coffins and big trucks delivering formaldehyde, that regardless if it's toxic or not or whatever the case is, if there's fumes or there isn't, I mean, that's still trucks, that's still traffic. That's still the potential for somebody to crash into a truck and then there's a spill of formaldehyde all over the street where there is a food processing plant just down the street that does serve the community. There's also a meat processing plant down the street. So we have to think about all of these other businesses that are in the area that already are there, that have a lot of employees, that service the community in so many different ways. I don't think that this is a terrible business. It's a much-needed business. I've had many losses in my family. I'm going to a funeral in a week. Like this is, I understand these services are important. I just don't think that this specific neighborhood is right for this business. Inglewood is a big sprawling place. There are a lot of open buildings in the area that are probably much better suited that you will not outgrow because chances are you will outgrow this space. So I just, you know, urge you to really think about what business you're trying to put into a neighborhood with people who have children, who've lived there for many years, people who just moved in a few years ago like myself. Because I did see the potential of this neighborhood being a vibrant artist sort of community. That's why I purchased my home there in twenty nineteen. We have Clippers stadiums, we have a park with a new racetrack in it and all of these amazing services that we now have in our neighborhood. And I don't think that this aligns with that vision that we have all had for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Brian. I'll keep it short. I also live on La Colina, but I'm a proud father of a one-year-old and the risk of, the idea of having him exposed as a chemical potentially as a father is concerning. I'll commend the council too for all the work you guys have done on the Inglewood pump track, the Dodgers Field, you know, all the, all the great work you guys have done. And so many kids I see there going every day. It would be a shame to risk something, to have something like this built and risk all those lives, all those kids to something, a substance that could cause them harm. So I just want to say thank you and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Hello, councilman and Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry for the outburst. He said something.
He said something about that he has served all the council people and the mayor and, and that would be a conflict of interest.
Well, sir, first of all, I haven't been served with anything, but even if someone sent like a letter or something like that, that wouldn't constitute.
No, no, he, he said he, I, never mind.
Alright, okay.
Never mind, his services.
I just wanna make sure you know that.
Let me, I don't wanna waste the time because I have a lot to say here. Um, I was looking at this actual document and, um, I saw some problems with it that you'd have to sign off on if you, uh, uh, agree to it. Um, and so I, here, let me just say my thing. Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilpersons, you must conclude when approving the special use permit that, and on, on the permit, it says number two of this special use permit states, "This site is adequately served by streets of appropriate width and function to carry the kind of traffic generated from a mortuary. Yet Beach Avenue is only thirty feet wide with parking on both sides and even shorter when there's a parked car across the street. A twenty-foot-long hearse constantly backing in and out of its narrow twenty-three-foot-deep driveway," and he provided the pictures of it, "will have a negative effect on traffic and the daily operations of this busy street." And then go down to number four on the special use permit, uh, and you will find, and it states, and you must find this to be true, "A mortuary will not be detrimental to properties in the immediate neighborhood. Property values will be harmed. Realty company studies have determined that mortuaries close to the residential and business properties decrease their value up to fourteen percent due to toxicity, odors, and negative psychological impact on the prospective residents and businesses looking to buy." And, and we have, we gave you a packet. I hope, did they get the packet? They did, okay. So, um, in there, we gave you the documentation because you asked somebody why, why they would think that. We have documentation for that. But you can just imagine that's a bargaining thing, right? You know, oh, you're next door to a bunch of dead people, you know? So, I mean, surely, surely, surely it's not helpful.
All of us are gonna have relatives of the past sometimes.
No, no, next door. Do you live next door to?
Sir, I, I'm just, just saying.
Okay, I, I, listen, I'm not putting down the business.
Okay.
I don't want it next door to me. Oh, by the way, I didn't see who I am at. I'm Steve Hurd, three-two-one East Beach. I'm right next door, three inches away from this proposed mortuary. Uh, anyways, uh, this.
Steve, could I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So, so you're saying there's no setback and you're?
No, not at all.
You're adjacent to it?
Yes, three inches. And he, he didn't put it in the picture, by the way. It was cut out. Anyways, let me finish before my time's up or give me a.
No, no, I'll give you another thirty seconds when I run out.
Thank you, thank you. So no, no, continuing on number four on this thing that you might, you guys have to sign to approve this, it says, it continues to say, "And you must find, uh, uh, and you must find this to be true and will not have a negative effect on the public safety or general welfare of the community." And we did give you documentation that there are fumes that come, you know, it's a liquid and liquids evaporate and fumes come off of them. That's ridiculous that it just stays solid and as a liquid. Anyways, "Yet the highly toxic formaldehyde fumes that will be produced by the operation of a mortuary needs to be ventilated out of its laboratory for the health and safety of its embalmers and staff, polluting the outside air, causing a significant health risk to the inhabitants of East Beach Avenue neighborhood. Emissions will not be regulated by any state or local agency, preventing any recourse or oversight. Thank you."
Steve, we're running out of time. So Steve, you, you, you sent this, uh, document? Oh, so, so we'll have to all recuse ourselves, I guess. Oh, oh, that's. I'm teasing you, Steve, Steve. I'm teasing you, buddy. We're okay.
Okay, but it's upsetting when he says that he had done funerals for all of you.
No, 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 no. Actually, no, actually, he said, no, he said that, he said that we bought a coffin from, no, excuse, excuse me, but not from that site. Come on. No, alright. Alright, thank you. Alright. No problem, Steve.
Good afternoon, Mayor and staff. My name is Reverend Barry Reed. I'm a licensed embalmer with over thirty years' experience. And, uh, mortuaries are regulated by the cemetery, uh, and mortuary bureau. And they're regulated to have, uh, testing done, uh, regularly. And OSHA is also in that, uh, play where you have to test and the testing has to fall under a certain percentage. And that also you have to have ventilation system. A ventilation system keeps everything at bay, uh, it dismisses and eliminates the formaldehyde gases that are in the building. So I parked across the street in the parking lot and as I entered the parking lot, there was a sign saying hazardous, cancer hazardous materials uh, due to, uh, vehicles exhaust. If you go to the doctor's office, you'll see that same sign, cancer-causing materials. Dentist's office, you'll find the same sign, cancer-causing materials. Just about anywhere you go, there's cancer-causing, uh, materials. And this mortuary, uh, they have facilities and air-conditioning units and units to dissipate the, uh, formaldehyde. So that's about all I have to say, but.
Thank you so much, sir. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Alright. Okay, with that, we're gonna close public comment. Now we're gonna open it up for, um, council comments before we take the vote. Let's let Gloria go first.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanna thank everyone for coming out. It's always important to hear from the community on important issues. And certainly today's attendance reflects the fact that this is a very important issue. I was kinda keeping tabs of who support and who do not support. And overwhelmingly, you know, certainly the folks in this audience today, the community is opposed to this. Uh, certainly, I understand the need for businesses here in this community and certainly the need for a mortuary is very important to all of us. Uh, one woman said that this is just the wrong place. You know, I've heard folks talk about, they live very close to this particular building where the proposed mortuary is supposed to be. And so that is a concern. Uh, I do have a question though, and I, I assume that staff could answer this. Where would there be an appropriate place in this city to have a businesses of this, of this sort to be?
Yeah, generally, the, the use is allowed in our manufacturing zone. And, but in that scenario, that's where the caveat is in the municipal code that if it happens to fall in there and it's adjacent to residential, then it requires this, this process to determine if it's appropriate.
And so that because of this process, um, it is not appropriate in this particular area. Because, go on.
No, no, that, that's the.
Because, say it again, Chris.
That's the process that we go through to determine if it's appropriate. So the planning commission process, they denied it, its appeal, it comes in ultimately.
And then we do have a process initially to go before the planning committee. And I know that the planning commission rather, uh, had people there. Uh, I don't know how many, but I know there are people there who did, uh, who do live in this community. And it's really about the people who live here because we do, we are concerned about making sure that the quality of life is important to the people who live here. And so I've heard, you know, uh, a number of people who do oppose this and I can understand why they do oppose it. And I can understand the need for, for, uh, this type of business. But I think with, with hearing from everyone here, that my position would be to oppose this because of that reason. So thank you again for everyone being here.
Okay, I'm gonna ask the council not to, uh, presuppose the vote because we haven't had a motion yet. So when we have council comments,
That's the fun part.
Until there's a motion, we're not supposed to discuss what our decision is. Alright, what's that?
I just say.
Okay, uh, councilwoman Falk.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I too wanna thank all of our community members for coming out. And, um, I actually really appreciate and, um, want to commend you for taking time out of your schedule because this is an important issue and affects your neighborhood. And we're listening to everything that everybody has to say. Um, I definitely take into consideration the planning commissions, um, their decision. And then also I look at what the community wants, like the fact that you guys live on these streets, most of you. There were some people that were identified by the mayor that don't live on the street that made a comment. But the ones that live in this immediate vicinity, you guys spoke loud and strong about how you feel about this business being in your community. And I think that that's very important and we have to pay attention to that. I want to acknowledge this business owner because you presented yourself very well. And, um, I too listened to one of the, um, residents that said that, you know, you seem like you are, have an upstanding business and that, you know, you receive lots of compliments. And, um, maybe this area is a challenge for you to operate in. But it seems like we all wish you well wherever you operate because you seem to be a upstanding business owner. So thank you all again for coming out. We appreciate hearing you. And whenever there's any other issue affecting your community, we wanna hear from you. That's how we make our decisions.
Or a decision that's been made as yet. That's what the deliberation is for. We're just talking right now. Councilman Elor Morales.
Yeah, I mean, um, this is our position, right, where we stand when we speak. Um, first of all, I would like to say that about maybe fourteen, fifteen years ago, those of you who were at La Colina back then, and I was here, was the first time you came out and you fought against a particular development that wasn't for you. Uh, I went out there, I walked Beach Street with you guys back then. It was the first time I actually saw Beach and behind Colina and there was artist district, uh, and some buildings were open so that I could take a look what was going on inside and I was amazed. But the commitment you guys have to your area has, has not only overcome that situation, but you've overcome two or three since then. And I commend you for that. Uh, I know that currently there's a lot there that you guys are, are, there's a contemplated, uh, project. And I know we're gonna build something good there. But I bring that up to say that, you know, one thing we're doing up here is we're building for the future also. We, what we accept today, future investors will have to live with. Folks that are contemplating certain projects around there will have to live with. And I think we're at an important part in our city where, you know, we, we are making decisions where we're either gonna invite more investors to a particular area or we're not. And that's very important, uh, in this particular situation. In regards to the business, um, I, you know, no one questions the level of business that this, these, uh, uh, folks do. I think you, you should be commended. It's a necessary business. Perhaps there wasn't enough community education, uh, to really, uh, answer some of the questions. But for me, I honestly don't even have to go that far in regards to making my decision. Uh, it was simply put earlier by one of the speakers that whether or not, uh, you want it in the neighborhood. And I believe that that's the most important part. At the end of the day, we all are building our community. And I take that very serious. These are areas where, uh, folks have been for a long time. And that's what makes up this city, you know? And when we, uh, have a planning commission, we take it very seriously, uh, the decisions they make. To overcome and to overrule a planning commission made up of residents that, uh, take this very seriously uh, is also something difficult to overcome. But again, for me, uh, I don't even have to go that far. Uh, the folks who live in the community, uh, for a particular use matter. So for me, you know, I know, uh, we're gonna get to a decision, uh, but I, uh, will be upholding the decision.
Okay, so, um, you know, what we're here for, we're actually here for a process. And the process requires a special use permit because this industrial area is adjacent to a residential area. And that's why we're here. And the reality is, is that the, uh, planning commission's input is advisory. Make no mistake about it. We're the ones here that make the ultimate decision. The reality is, is that, I, I started in Inglewood nineteen seventy-two. And Beach Street, oh, it's always that part's been known as industrial, even though there's residential behind it. But the reality is, is that the Inglewood that's owned that street industrial is not the Inglewood of today. The things that were acceptable when they, when there was nothing here is not the Inglewood of today. And ultimately, the people that have the say are the people that have to live there. Now, why do I say that's the people that have to live in the area? Because I don't think, this gentleman, I think it's wonderful that you have a business that provides such a, a needed service. But the reality is, it's not likely that you own the building. You're probably leasing it. Is that right? Okay. And so what happens is, is that the person that's leasing it doesn't have the same investment in the community as people who have to raise their children there, that wanna live their lives there. And, and to me, that's the most important issue. And I always put myself in the seat of the residents. I say, well, I want this, like I said, it was like three inches from his property. I wouldn't want it three inches from my property. So I'm not presupposing my vote, but, um, you know, that's how I feel. The residents deserve to be heard. Is there a motion?
I will move, uh, number two.
Second.
And, uh, the first part of number three, which is adopt the attached resolution denying the SUP, uh, twenty-three dash zero zero one seven.
A second. And Madam City Clerk, would you call for the vote?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmembers Gray.
Yes.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Budd.
Aye. The planning commission's recommendation is upheld. We're done, folks. Okay, now we go on to the rest of the meeting. Now, you guys aren't gonna stay for the rest of the meeting? I'm, like, I should, I should have held it for last.
Ken.
Let's go ahead and.
Alright, we're gonna go on to, uh,
Billy.
You guys come and be, please leave quietly though, you guys. Steve, see, aren't you glad we didn't recu, we didn't recuse ourselves? Alright. You're welcome.
M one.
Okay, so now we're on M one.
Yes, Mayor. Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three and November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Gray.
Epstein.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Budd.
Aye, consent counter. Items two through five pulling six.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Gray.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Budd.
Aye. Call for item six.
Yes, Mayor. It's staff report recommending that the mayor and councilmembers approve a memorandum of understanding with the State of California Department of Justice for acceptance of fiscal year twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four state tobacco grant funds. In the amount of one hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Gray had a question.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question regarding, it's great that we're receiving, uh, it's on the agenda to receive these funds, but I wanted to know about what's happening as a result of funds in the past that we've received. What's the status? Has it reduced, uh, any of the issues as, as it relates to these funds?
Okay, I don't see Captain Garcia, so I'm gonna. Okay, so you can come on in. Uh, it's, it's, it's my understanding, this money is gonna provide for education, overtime for officers for enforcement and, uh, yeah, will you, yes, if you please, you could actually come sit up here so we can see you better. And, and so, so Captain, you know, uh, no, I'm not saying that at all, but, but it's my understanding from, from being law enforcement that these kind of grants do not pay to add personnel. They, they provide services, education services and undercover, um, enforcement services. If there's anything else to add, please feel free.
Yes, that, you're correct, uh, Mr. Mayor. The, it is not for personnel. It is basically, it is, um, the purpose of the grant is, uh, to, to edu, it's twofold. It's to educate tobacco retailers as to. It's to educate tobacco retailers as to the appropriate laws regarding single sales tobacco, sales of tobacco products to minors, flavored tobaccos, that type of stuff. It also has an educational component, where we educate not only the public, but also the schools. So there is a component where we're educating our, our schools.
And, and this is for prospective efforts, not retrospective efforts? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers, Gray.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. A one.
Sorry, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. We had four closed session items. The first one is Garcia versus City of Inglewood, requesting settlement authority on that matter.
So moved.
Second. Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers, Gray.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Hold on one second. I, I think Councilwoman Gray has to abstain if she wasn't in the closed session.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. Abstain from that one.
Who was not present was Councilwoman Gray and Councilman Padilla.
All right. Okay, so, so recall the vote.
Abstain.
We're, I want you to recall the vote.
Are you gonna make a new motion?
New, well, say, okay.
We'll rescind our votes.
A motion to rescind.
No motion needed, we rescind our vote.
And I'll second. So let's, let's call for the vote on the rescension.
Yes, sir. Councilmembers, Gray.
Aye.
Morales.
We're rescinding.
Yeah, we, now you gotta stay with me, buddy.
Hold up, hold up. I will say this, I believe, and you can clarify, but as long as the vote is still open, we can rescind it without making a motion.
You can.
That's what we're doing. Each personally, we're rescinding and we're retake the vote.
That's what we're doing, yeah.
If they're retaking the vote to approve.
We're not.
No, no, we're not. We're rescinding the motion and the vote that started, all right? So let me run it. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Councilmembers, Gray.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. Now, motion to approve the first item.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Yes, sir. Councilmembers, Gray.
Abstain.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye.
Second item was Ramirez versus City of Inglewood, we're also requesting settlement authority in that matter.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers, Gray.
Aye.
No, no, you.
What am I, what are we voting?
Abstain.
We're still in the closed session.
Oh, abstain.
Yes, ma'am. Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye.
Item three was the workers' compensation claim of Solomon Nazir, we're also requesting settlement authority in that matter.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers, Gray.
Abstain.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye.
The last item on the closed session item was the workers' compensation claim of Jose Reyes, we're also requesting settlement authority in that matter.
Madam, so moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers, Gray.
Abstain.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. Are there any oral reports?
Not from the city attorney's office, thank you.
Mr. City Manager, C M one.
No, Mr. Mayor, no oral reports today, thank you very much.
C C two, Madam City Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. Just briefly, wanted to continue to let my colleague, Councilman Padilla, know that his family is still in my prayers as they laid to rest his mother-in-law today. And then also wanted to leave something with our residents and, you know, we deal with things, but if you let people's perception of you dictate your behavior, you'll never grow as a person. But if you leave yourself open to experience despite what others think, then you will learn to grow. Thank you, Mayor, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. C C two.
Yes, a monthly treasures report for the month ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Receive and file. Successor agencies in session, C S A two.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on November fourteenth and November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Move approval.
Second. Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers, excuse me, successor agency members, Gray.
Abstain.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. C S A three.
Monthly treasures report for the month ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Receive and file. Adjourn the successor agency. Housing authorities in session, H two.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on November fourteenth and November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Housing authority members, Gray.
Abstain.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. H three.
Monthly treasures report for the month ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Receive and file. Adjourn the housing authority, the parking authorities, in session P one.
Approval of the minutes of the meeting held on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Parking, parking authority members, Gray.
Abstain.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. Adjourn the parking authority, J P A's in session, J P A one.
Approval of the minutes of the meeting held on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Joint powers authority members, Gray.
Abstain.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. J P A two.
Oh, excuse me. Monthly treasures report for the month ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Receive and file. Adjourn the J P A. There's no appointments to boards, commissioners, committees, public comments, any persons wishing to address the council, or any matter connected with city business not elsewhere considered, on the agenda may do so at this time, for one minute. Looks like there are no further public comments. Mayor and council remarks.
Public comments?
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello.
Go on, right, direct her to the microphone, just so they can record you.
Thank you, Mayor Butts and the rest of the council staff. My name is Renee Correia, and I work for Ultimate Health Services. The reason why I'm here today is because we're gonna be having a grand opening this coming Saturday at our, at thirty-three oh one on Century Boulevard. We're hosting our first grand opening here to promote our health services to the Inglewood community. We've been servicing the Los Angeles area, Orange County area for well over fifty years, and we're really excited to bring this venue of response and support to your constituents here in the Inglewood area. So we want to extend a special invite to the councilmen and women, and to you, Mayor, to come and join us. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. So with that, we'll close public comment. Mayor and council remarks. Councilwoman Gray, District one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to ask the mayor if he will adjourn this meeting. In memory of Helene Campbell, her service was last week, I believe it was. Her father, Billy Campbell, has the agency, Allstate Agency, here in the City of Inglewood. Helene was a bright and shining star here in the city. She was always very helpful in, in dealing with the clients that came to the Allstate Agency. And so I'd like to ask the mayor to adjourn the meeting in her honor today. Also, another community person, Bobby Anderson, I believe the mayor certainly had a memorial certificate for her too. Bobby Anderson is known throughout L.A. County and the city and, and the state. She's a community activist, very much involved in, in the Democratic Party. So I'd like to ask the mayor if he could adjourn in her memory today.
Thank you. Counsel.
And just a couple of more, just a couple of more. This month is Martin Luther King's birthday, I think it was January fifteenth, and so I just want to acknowledge that in his memory and so forth. The other thing, I did attend an event this past week, a couple of weeks ago, for Gerald Thompson. I think that Mr. Mayor knows him. In fact, I believe Mr. Mayor and Longwood myself was honored by Gerald Thompson's organization, Pathway to the Future, as one of his frontline soldiers. I remember seeing you at his event. And Gerald has done a lot in this community, he's really is a community activist. So he was, he was honored a couple of weeks ago at a church, I think it was called Rejected Stone Missionary Baptist Church, by the church. He was honored as one of Martin Luther King's community activists. That was the name of the award. And so I want to congratulate Gerald, you can see the picture there, the pastor of the church, I think it was, I think the pastor's name was Foster, but that's the pastor of the church, myself and Gerald. And so I just want to congratulate him for his community service. And so with that, that concludes my remarks, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Falk, District four.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I want to acknowledge Founder's Day for my sorority, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. It's founded January fifteenth, nineteen oh eight, and we are celebrating one hundred and sixteen years of service. So congratulations, the women of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. Also, I attended the U N C F Dr. King Breakfast. It was at the Proud Bird. It was a wonderful event, me and my husband were there. I want to congratulate Monica Surratt, the Western Region Vice President, for putting on such a fabulous event. That is my bishop, Dr. Charlie Haynes of the C M E Church, Christian Methodist Episcopal Church, and he brought the invocation. Also, my husband and my sons participated in the King Day Parade, the fabulous longstanding Los Angeles King Day Parade. And my husband is a member of Kappa Alpha Chi fraternity, and we are building some future Kappa Man, so that's my young son, Sebastian, in the front walking, and then my son is part of the Kappa League right there. So anyway, that was a fabulous event. I want to commend our city council and mayor of Los Angeles for another outstanding King Day Parade. Also, we have the Black History Month celebration coming up next month, and that's gonna be on February twenty-fourth in downtown Market Street from eleven a.m. to five p.m. Looking forward to celebrating a fabulous City of Inglewood event. That day, there will be entertainment, live entertainment, vendors, arts, crafts, and food, and much, much more. So please put this on your calendar and plan to come out and celebrate with the City of Inglewood. Also, I will be hosting my town hall on Wednesday, February twenty-first. It will be at the Hollywood Park Casino, we'll have refreshments there, we have lots of great information planned for our residents, we're going to give updates on the retail space for Hollywood Park Casino, and then, not for the casino, but for the retail space, and then also for the Intuit Dome, and lots of other updates, including the Inglewood Unified School District. So come on out, get your information, and put this date on your calendar. Lastly, I want to wish Cheryl Shaw Williams, our planning commissioner, a very happy birthday. There's her beautiful face. She is celebrating out of town right now, but congratulations and happy birthday, Cheryl Shaw Williams. And then also, I want to wish my assistant, my deputy, Malcolm Patton, a wonderful birthday as well. And also congratulate him, and this goes, this is actually for the mayor. He started with me a year ago, so he's been my deputy for a year, so congratulations. I know that I'm probably not the easiest boss, but he's hung in there, and the mayor has a little standing joke with him, so he made it there. And lastly, I'd like to close this meeting in honor of a resident, James Edwards May. He was a twenty-year District Four resident, and his funeral services will happen this weekend, where he will be memorialized, Mayor, so if you can close this meeting in honor of James Edward May. Thank you.
James Edward May?
Yes.
And I'll be brief, Mayor.
Thank you.
Don't have much, but I did want to say that I did get a few phone calls inquiring about our Martin Luther King celebration, and I know we're gonna do it in February, and we definitely look forward to that. We, as a city, hold the extinction of being one of the first cities, I believe, west of the Mississippi, to make Martin Luther King holiday, an actual holiday. Goes back to, I believe, the late seventies, when, at the time, Councilman Edward Vincent passed the ordinance. I believe that's how it came down, and if it's wrong, I'm sure I'll be corrected, but I believe I'm right. And the reason it's so important is because back then, it just wasn't easy to pass that.